The fourth thing tonight is public hearing on local law number four, one-year moratorium on adult entertainment. I open the meeting to the public for comments at this time. No one wish to comment at this time? I close this public hearing. I open the second public hearing on local law number five, one-year moratorium on subdivision of three or more lots of parties for certain parcels and tracts of land. That's from certain parcels, I'm sorry. And that is open for discussion. There be no need to address the board, I close the public hearing. I need a motion on local law number four if you want to do it now.
You have it.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Menard. Any discussion from the board? There be no discussion, this is a roll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hotroide. Trustee Pentfield.
Aye.
In the mayor votes on. Local law number five.
I'll make a motion that we pass local law number five establishing a one-year moratorium on the acceptance of applications for the issuance of building permits for the subdivision of three or more lots for parcels from certain parcel tract.
Second.
Second.
Motion by trustee Pentfield, seconded by trustee Menard. Any discussion? There's no discussion, roll call vote, trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hoprow. Aye. Trustee Pentfield.
Aye.
In the mayor votes on. I open the meeting at this time to the general public for comments. Anybody wishing to address the board may do so at this time.
Hi, Lynn Charlier back again. I was here, I think, last month about my project called Meadows Edge at the end of Ross's Point. And tonight I have delivered to Carol a letter with my intent of my project. And to kind of sum it up, I've applied for three building lots, calling that phase one for this current year. And then the balance of the lots, which would be another 13, will come sometime in the future. And just to let you know that that's where I am in letting you ask any questions of me that you might have too. I understand that there's going to be a year that you have to be notified of any future.
That's correct, once the local lot is filed.
Right, right.
How long will it be like two or three months on the road looking back in the state?
Okay. So, do you have any questions with me?
Well, I understand that there's some problems up there.
Are there?
Yes.
What's that?
Basically water line.
Oh, okay, all right.
And I think, I think that we've done some research, and I believe that eight-inch line that is on your property going up with the hydrant up the road is still yours. That was never turned over to the village or was never given to me?
Oh, you mean, yeah, on Oakwood property?
On Oakwood.
I don't own that property anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I sold that in January, so you might not have been aware of that. And I sold it to C&amp;P Properties, it would be Jeff Peck, Neil and Diane Cone. And what I think we're in the process of doing right now is getting it turned over. That is your intent, to have it turned over to you, is that correct?
Well, this is the problem, if you have, you have problems with that line.
Right.
At this point, it's your problem.
I've spoken to Jeff Peck, who's the new owner, and he has no qualms at all about, you know, tossing that up to the village.
And the other thing is, is that you're aware, if you're thinking about connecting across the street to that water line, there's only a four-inch line, and we don't own that, so I don't think that's going to be a problem.
You mean, across the street?
Well, yeah, directly.
Cross Smith or across?
Cross Smith.
Oh, I'm not planning on coming that direction. I'm planning on coming, if, this is not my forte right here. What I think is happening is, is I'm coming across from Oakwood, picking up on Oakwood.
On the eight-inch line.
Right, the sewer, the sewer, I think, if you don't happen to know that.
I'm, no, I'm not, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, he doesn't know. Everything's coming over from Oakwood.
Ryan, can you add anything to that?
The village water line pretty much stops by the driveway.
Right.
It's on the south side of the street.
Correct.
Then it continues up the street, it's a private line owned by residents toward the end of the village, Mr. LeBart.
Outside the village.
Outside the village limits, and they own, they paid to put that water line in, and they own it. So if anyone taps onto that water line, you'd have to get permission from them, and then we're talking about digging up the road.
Should be the water line on Smith Street itself?
On Smith Street.
Oh, I, I'm not coming in that direction.
Yeah, it sounds like, and I'm way outside of this, so I'm not sure. It sounds like Doug and Dale are probably working with Peck's associates to see what they have to do to get that eight-inch line turned over to the village and make sure it meets the requirements of the village, and then they're going to try to connect to that eight-inch line that's going on Oakwood. But again, I'm, I'm way on the outside, so I'm only supposing what I believe.
And I spoke to Jeff, and he's more than willing to toss up that water line, that isn't an issue.
See, the problem, the problem with the water line is, no one actually knows where it goes. We know it goes from point A where it's connected to the hydrant, the fire hydrant, and that's the only place we know where it's connected. Now, if this is considered a dead-end water line, which doesn't go anywhere, you know, that causes another problem. When you're trying to eliminate the water, the dead-end water lines and make, put a system in.
Yep.
So I don't know how they're planning on connecting, as it is, the water line's on private property, so.
Well, that, that would be the process of identifying, like what you're saying about it being a dead end, one, what's the requirements to get it turned over to the village? And one of the requirements, obviously, is we don't want it a dead end, so what's, what's the remedy to make it so it's not a dead end?
Right.
And I believe Doug is in the midst of that, identifying, one, with the present owners, what they're willing to do and what they're not willing to do, and then go to the village and representative of Mrs. Charlier and say, okay, this is what our plan is.
Well, as due development, we would have to have some kind of a plan of what her intentions are to go, you know, to extend that water line, where it's going to be connected, the size of it.
Right.
Second, if you have.
Can I just say something?
Sure, absolutely.
I told Doug, and Doug was going to check with Jeff, when I sold that property, I'm envisioning what I also gave to Jeff for blueprints from the original people who had it, and I think there was utility plans, because I was asking what the little circles were and everything when I first got it, and they, oh, that's manholes, that's a water line, that's that, that's that. So Doug was going, and I can call Jeff too, to speed this up as well, and I was going to call Jeff and ask if I could re-look at the maps that I had given him. And that might tell something, because it's from engineering way back when they first started building the condos, but the water lines I could see on there, and the sewer lines, because I remember asking what those were.
If, if those are as built, it would be nice if you both could have a copy of them.
Oh, absolutely, sure. If that's what Jeff has, and I'm pretty sure that they exist, because, you know, I mean, because they're little squares on there and little circles, which I think would indicate the utilities.
Yeah.
No buildings, they weren't buildings.
They installed it, because that was supposed to be almost like a three-phase project when we first started it, so who knows how far they went with the phases?
Right.
See, that was done almost, is it 15 years ago?
Well, they did find two manholes on my property. There were two manholes located on, on the Meadows Edge.
Well, I think, I think you've got to understand the villages concerned here.
Sure.
First of all, we don't want to hold up anybody from our built, from the homes.
Right.
But we have certain restrictions, number one, the health department has told us that they don't want any more dead ends.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you can understand that.
Sure.
So we want to make sure that the bases are covered on the village's end, the village.
Okay.
And I think that's our only concern.
Okay.
I understand that the electric is already in on that side.
Mm-hmm.
The piping, and, and piping is there all partway, but it's, and there is a transformer bucket there.
Okay, so we got to.
So that's, that's not a real issue.
No, but we got to deal with the water issue, that's the big one, right?
If they're going to propose to extend that project any farther, that's where we're going to have to do an upgrade, and I would like to know that now, rather than after the fact, because then that could cost even more after the fact.
Yeah, you may have to put in bigger lines.
We would have to, definitely.
So it might be, you know, we might just give us an insight of how far down the road you're looking to do the other 13.
Well, if everything went according to plan, which incidentally happens, you know, it just doesn't go that way.
It doesn't go that way.
Yeah, you know, I mean, in the best of worlds, I would be getting ready to do the second phase next year. But as you can see, I'm having a hard time kickstarting this one, you know, so I'm just starting to get through this one, and hopefully it would be next year. I'm hoping.
See, the biggest problem that I could see is, everything around you is private, and that's, you know, the village seems like, when we ended the water line, well, back before I was even working for the village, when they ended the water line and the sewer lines on Smith Street, whoever developed went a little farther, went a little farther, and if they did turn it over to the village, we accepted it, it didn't matter our specs. Well, like I said, with Oakwood, when they extended that project out, I guess the whole property ended up going like bankrupt, and the bank ended up with it, and then the lines never got turned over, because there was such a dilemma with the bank.
Yeah. Well, first of all, that's not an issue, that can be turned over.
Right, but the only thing, what I'm saying is, if, it's just the location of the three lots.
Mm-hmm.
They might be an excellent location to build a house, but they're not a very good location for utilities.
Why, why is that? Because they're right, right across from them, right? Right on the other side?
Well, it's because of the condition, the utilities are not really available.
Mm-hmm. So.
See, eventually, that water line, that eight-inch water line that goes up Smith Street should be extended out all the way to the end, should have fire hydrants up there for fire protection.
Right.
I mean, the nearest hydrant is quite a ways down the street, and.
But, so if those lots aren't good, and they can't build the road, it sounds like I haven't got any lots to play with.
I really don't want to say that, but.
Yeah.
I guess as a developer, it would be your responsibility to extend the water line out.
To pay for it.
Right, for the water. And the sewer line's already there.
Well, aren't I anyone?
The sewer.
I assumed I was paying for the water line anyway to come across.
Coming off of Oakwood, you would be paying for that water line. Right now, the village doesn't recognize Oakwood as really a place that you can get water until it gets turned over.
Right.
And so, looking at the water line that is on Smith Street, that's undersized, along with electric really being undersized, other than just those three lots. So I think that's the real crux right now, is want to make sure of identifying where you're going in the future, and will the existing utility support that?
Okay.
So that the village can try to plan.
You're speaking out from this, aren't you?
I am.
You know, you've got to get this message back.
Well, I understand that come a year from now, you decide to build, you don't need any on-site assistance.
Oh, no, no, and let's get them all over with right now, and I fully agree with that, you know, so we'll see how far Doug gets, you know, and what I can find from Oakwood too, for you as far as plans go. My mind's eye can almost see it, going, what is this?
If they, if they do tap off the water line on Oakwood, it would have to be extended out to if there's a proposed road or whatever, to put a fire hydrant and have fire protection, and have almost like a plan where it's going to loop back around to the backside of Oakwood if the water line moves out that way.
Right.
Yeah.
I wish I had seen some stuff with me now, because I'm almost thinking that there's water back there, but anyway, okay.
Yeah, yeah, there might be water.
There is back there.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have a plan on that.
Yeah.
And if it is a dead end, we would like it looped back around.
Okay.
And that's what, that's what we're saying, would, you know, add a bit of fire hydrants.
So if we meet all this, then is there an issue with my three lots? If we, if.
That's the end of the line, the end of those lots.
There's a fourth lot, yeah. There's a fourth lot west of the third lot.
Right, because there's.
Which is in the town.
Right?
No.
Okay.
There is another lot there, right?
Yeah, there's a potential for a fourth.
There is a fourth lot potentially within the village limit.
Correct.
Okay. So, so the choice would be then not, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but I thought when we looked at the map, we were discussing extending the water line up Smith Street, is that correct?
From the hydrant?
Yes.
The corner you're talking about?
From the corner of the Oakwood driveway?
Yeah.
The east corner of the Oakwood driveway.
Which is right here.
Okay, the water main is on the south side of Smith Street.
This is the hydrant that's down here, Oakwood.
There's a T on it where it goes to Oakwood.
Comes up to here.
Right.
Okay.
And would be extended from here out here to this road.
We don't know, we don't know where it goes back to.
She's not talking about extending from there.
Here someplace.
Okay, but if there's.
Smith Street needs to be extended.
Right.
Between Mr. Bobby with his development and whoever else wants to develop up there, that would be one of the priorities.
Because it seems that there's, that there's room for an additional lot in the west, wouldn't it make more sense to extend the utility to run to Smith Street?
Yes.
You've got to understand that, we talked about Mr. Bobby, there was quite a sudden push contest on that one, and they went to, they wanted to own the line and ask permission to tap onto it, but they don't want to go the extra foot, that eight-inch line, that would require them to sign.
But is there anything required in the local laws to have hydrants, every so many?
That's our responsibility, not the property, we give them the hydrants to put in, they always have.
Right.
I don't think there's any distance.
Yes, there is a distance.
Oh, is there?
Oops.
The ISO.
I tried to get it.
Okay, but it's not in our, it's not under development.
Yeah, it's not above, it's something like 500 feet, but I mean, what I'm saying is, we can't put a hydrant on a four-inch line.
No, 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 useless, not useless.
And to clarify your question, because I just looked over on Mike's shoulder, the plan that they have now, and it's many versions different from the last one that I've seen, because I'm so far on the outskirts of this project, I would suspect that the line extension that the Charlier development would do would be from the eight-inch, just as it goes up into Oakwood, from there, put a T in, going up along the edge of Smith Street, and then there's a potential road that would go straight north. So you'd have a new eight-inch line on Smith Street, the 10 feet away that you need to be away from sewer, you know, the sewer's on the same line there, so it'd be like in the ditch line or a little bit further. But looking at the layout as it is now, that would make the most sense, to be continuing along Smith rather than going into Oakwood, and then, that would make, so you'd have the option of, of going up and then looping back into the backside of Oakwood.
Well, I'll make another suggestion, is that, I mean, we can bounce it back from all evening here, but it's still, Doug works very closely with the village superintendent to make sure that village questions and needs are covered, that's something that's all we are asking.
Yeah, and I agree. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board? All right, closer at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, September 2nd to September 9th, you all have copies. Is there any additions or deletions? There are named, made, none? Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by trustee Hoprow, seconded by trustee Menard, any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Bills, so have copies of the bills, is there any, well, we don't have a pressure, no additions or deletions?
Any motion to pay the bill?
Not yet. Motion by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Hoprow, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
For the record, I did receive from Miss Charlier her letter of intent on her three-lot subdivision on Smith Street. The next letter is a letter of correspondence from the governor's looking ladder. We wish to inform you of a new member who was approved by our company for a probationary period of six months, and that's William Johnson from Ross's Point. Please act on this new member as soon as possible. Also, I hope you can be advised that the following people are no longer members of our company, Paul Appelia, Joseph Von Spiegel, and Jamie Sample. As a side note to all interested parties, Ross's Point's new Sutton Humper is now available for viewing on the following website, adarand.clerk.com. Thank you for your time in these matters, Dennis Roberts, secretary.
I'll make a motion that we accept William Johnson into the company for an approved period of six months.
Second. Motion made by trustee Pentfield, seconded by trustee Hoprow, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carried. Reports of mayor and trustees. First thing on the agenda tonight is the update of NEUA, NEUA, NEUA manual meeting that I attended last week, and some very, very positive things come out of there, the, whoops, the NISEC charge, the NISEC charge that we are being charged for, you know, the, the update there that we all screamed about, I don't know what's here. The municipal electric association is filing a lawsuit against NISEC to try to get that reduced for a rate reduction. How come, we don't know, but they've started. September 23rd of the, and we told we could make this announcement, September 23rd, the board of trustees of the power authority of the state of New York approved the contract extension of municipal power, is going to the governor on the 23rd of September for his signature. There will be a public announcement sometime around Thanksgiving. Another good news, Power Authority, and I think we're aware of this, but they had quite a presentation on it, gave, the municipal electric association, say gave, $1.2 million to buy alternate energy vehicles. Right now, there's none available, all been sold. Honda and Toyota make the hybrids, they, they're still available, but they are in state contract, they will be out in October. You can get the vehicle on a 36-month loan from the power authority at 0%. One of the things I looked at and thought of, reparations for the total electric vehicle, it's an off-road vehicle, but it's, that's one of the things. The other thing, as the board knows, or somebody hears, I wanted to purchase a car for trips and stuff, this might be the time to do it, until 2004 budget. Wednesday I'm going to check on the IEP, see if they can get that number or that, I'm not sure. If not, we can take advantage of the 0% and all pay it back, and do it to the months and pay us. They have four of the, four of the municipal electrics that had them, had them, had them, now they're changing their bay. Toyota, I think Kelly's knows, gets 50.7 miles per gallon gas, everybody swears by it, but Ford will be coming out with one this fall. It's quite a thing to see, we were allowed to drive them out there. The interesting thing is, you get to a stop like with one of these, and stop, and the engine stops, and a little light comes on that says auto start, and when you step on the accelerator, it takes off on the electric motor, automatically, and as you progress, the engine cuts in, and of course you say gas, but the engine starts. So I'd like the board to probably consider that this month, there are, they will be on the state contract, too, so. They're pushing them. The federal government has issued a directive that all American automobile manufacturers come out with alternative energy vehicles, so this is, it's going to be a big push-up. Next thing, we're at the power authority, we were presented a plaque from the president of the power authority, and for, in recognition of our 100 years as a municipal electric. And it just goes on to say, for 100 years of continual electric service and public power system, and a local long-term partnership with the New York State Power Authority in February 1903 to February 2003, it's, don't ask me to pronounce the names because they're good Irishmen. Anyway, we have the plaque. Saturday, Saturday, telephone company is celebrating their 100th anniversary, and I was asked to give a speech there, a couple minutes, and I decided that rather than a speech, that we would give a proclamation. So I have a proclamation here for the telephone company, and it says, where the Champlain Telephone Company is celebrating their 100th year anniversary as a telephone company, and that's where it's, they have provided outstanding service to the residents of the village of Ross's Point as well as the surrounding township, and where as a partnership shared by the Champlain Telephone Company and the village of Ross's Point has demonstrated to be a most noble, beneficial, and excellent relationship to all concerned, therefore be around the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point, hereby do we have issued this proclamation to thank the Champlain Telephone Company for their service to the community, and therefore be able to tell the George A. Rivers Mayor of Ross's Point personally, we have this proclamation out there to tell you of all on Saturday, September 23rd, signed by myself. And last thing I would like the board to do to consider, a lot of us there, let us talk to a lot of village officials, and everybody's going to four-year terms, everybody is finding out that two-year term is not going to last long. Most of the villages have all gone to four-year terms. I'd like the board to consider, in March election, putting it on the ballot, I don't think it's something the board can sign, but put it on the ballot for the voters, four-year term with three-term limits. And if anybody's starting out a board, we consider it more than twelve years. Get that consideration in the next couple months, please. Okay, with that, I am done. Trustee Menard.
My first item on the agenda tonight is an update on the compact fluorescent lighting program. Within, we received notice that the bulbs will be here, and that the IEP, we sent out envelopes with addresses on them, and they're going to stuff them, but I believe coupons in, that people will be able to go to Shazie Hardware once they get these coupons, and redeem them for the fluorescent lights. Within the next couple, three weeks or so, you should be getting a coupon, so look for that. The next item is a letter from the board, that we were sponsoring, or supporting the people in Wyatt Pharmaceutical that are getting laid out, let them read a letter that we're going to send to the governor and state officials. There, says Wyatt Pharmaceutical, a major employer in Clinton County, recently announced that over the next two years, several hundred jobs will be eliminated from their Ross's Point plant. We are asking for your help to attempt to keep these very critical jobs in Ross's Point. The negative financial impact of these layoffs to this community, the county, and the state will be significant. We are hoping that you. We are hoping that you can help in making sure jobs stay in the United States. Some needs, something needs to be done, whether it is through tax incentives or other financial incentives. The village of Rosas Point has worked closely with Wyatt Pharmaceuticals for many years to bring about multimillion dollar infrastructure upgrades in order to provide sound and dependable water, sewer, and electrical service. The loss of jobs will have a dramatic effect on tax base to this community, therefore placing additional burden on taxpayers. Anything that you could do in keeping jobs in the North Country would be greatly appreciated. I would like to make a motion that we send this letter to all the state officials.
Second. Motion made by trustee Menard, seconded by trustee Huckrow, ready to discuss. There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all of that?
Thank you, trustee Menard. Before you, back into you, trustee Huckrow, may I have a minute? I suppose. I forgot a couple of things. You notice the poster up here on the, on the wall? I attended a meeting Tuesday morning before I headed to Alec Bay to the other meeting. On, and was invited to this Lake to Locks first annual meeting. And this poster is the new fall I Love New York campaign. This will be on TV, radio announcements and stuff that, uh, actually could take you to Rosas Point, start right off, right at the top, and go right down to Whitehall. The Lake to Locks, uh, bouncing Lake George and the Champlain Canal. These people have formed a nonprofit organization and they're asking, you know, that we all be involved in it. We are involved in it in a way because of the signage that is going on, State Dock, and we've done that with people in Lake to Locks. So, it's something positive. Last thing I have to report, and I received a telephone call today at three-thirty. And Delaware Hudson Railroad Station was humanously approved by the Historical Board of State of New York. It is now a national historic site. So I'm very, very happy and pleased over that. And thank you, Mr. Huckrow.
Yes, sir. First item is an update on the water project. Who am I?
Oscar.
Who's on the spot?
With the, uh, water project, um, the sixteen inch line has been connected to the water tank. We're waiting on Landmark to complete the piping within, in the interior of the tank. Um, the electrical, uh, contract for is, uh, starting to put the conduit for the interior of the tank. Landmark is gonna be back, supposed to be back today, but I expect it'll be back tomorrow. They'll continue with the interior piping. So right now, we have the piping up to the tank and we have the piping away from the tank, um, connected into the system. Once they have the piping complete, inside the tank, we'll be able to backflush through the sixteen inch line and clean out all the debris, disinfect it, and, uh, pressure test it. Tomorrow, luck is gonna be moving into the village, uh, parking lot, relocating, uh, sanitary manholes. Uh, bore crew's gonna be, um, on site, probably tomorrow afternoon. They'll have all set up and they'll start the bore in under Lake Street, right in front of the, uh, village offices. So that's where we are with that. Today, we had one, uh, water service we had to correct, that the electrical department, uh, found a mishap that we had missed up on West Clinton Street. And the contractor went back over and we corrected that today. So on the water project, we're going along smoothly, but we're gonna be tearing up your yard in, uh, village offices for the next couple of weeks. As we get closer and closer to the plant and making the connection to the plant. Any questions?
Do we have a plan for the parking for the residents who maybe come to the office?
My understanding is, is that the parking in front of the, uh, village offices will be utilized, even though it's quite, uh, limited for the day-to-day customers of the office. And I know someone from the board, I believe, or the water committee was gonna talk with the church about possibly using that, uh, gravel area on the other side of the, you, you see, though.
But the, the customer should park to the left where the outside staircases?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Believe that you can still park in the back.
Right.
Yes. But you'll have.
Right, you're just one in.
In and out will be all on the north side of the.
Are we gonna sign that for two-way traffic so people will know, do you know?
Probably we should put a.
I think we should put a two-way traffic on there.
Either that or just take, just unscrew the element or take it down.
Cover it.
Yeah, I was thinking just cover it, so.
Because people should use real caution of pulling in around the building, because there really is quite a blind spot there, so.
Um, still got, still got two concerns. Number one is for the sixteen inch across Maple Street and where, and wherever we go. We've been judging, we've talked about the zigzag thing.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. More than John?
John can review all those.
Um, I, uh, as Doug indicated, the last meeting, uh, written a report of sketches coming to Maple Street crossing. I apologize if it's supposed to be here today, but, um, it'll be here by Wednesday. Zigzag piping, uh, as the board directed. I met with the Clinton County Health Department on Friday, uh, or last week, the week before. Reviewed the basic need, but maybe the overall, um, reasons why that was required in the code, reviewed the code requirement within. Gave him the design of the zigzag piping and a comprehensive report on how it's properly sized, which I believe the board has been provided. But, um, got it down the fill, uh, the day that we met with, uh, with the fellow at the health department. Basically presented the village's position that, um, even though it's, uh, even though it's, uh, required by the code perhaps based construction is, is more appropriate. And then early was in pretty good agreement, and was pretty well received by the county health department. He was going to review the materials in detail last week. I phoned him three or four times, four times last week. He apparently was on the road quite a bit. And I haven't really made any contact with him because of that. However, um, I will pursue it again. Pursue him again this, today, you know. Push him tomorrow, and if necessary, meet with him on Wednesday, work out any details. General impression that, uh, I received was that, from his office, was that, uh, he was pretty happy with the plan and willing to endorse, uh, phasing the construction as, as necessary.
Uh, what, what among the points that the family agreed was to be accepted, Governor?
Sent the board a letter.
Sorry, you're not gonna wait?
Yeah, it's okay, it's, it's a time of year, it's, it's protected.
Was it the five hundred and seventy?
September fifth is the retort to the Clinton County Health Department, it's addressed to them. Basically, we sent several copies to the village as well. There was quite a bit of confusion, and I look back through the old village board minutes, and I could understand why the board was confused, because I myself was a little confused. But basically, using the assumption that the tank would not be drained in a winter type scenario. Using summer, um, water quality, uh, temperature and pH, as well as the elevated level of chlorine. Very similar to what we did in the other whole tank was drained this year. The final design came up with five hundred and seventy feet of that pipe.
Three six inch, correct?
Yes. Basically, one, uh, two hundred and eighty-five foot long, it would fit reasonably well on the site. There was a lot of discussion over the past month or two about, uh, how much was required. And then there was a lot of back and forth between myself and the board, and myself and Doug, and myself and Gary. And I thought it appropriate that we summarize that up in that letter, but, which I did. And hopefully the board has, has an opportunity to review that in the next couple of weeks. Can be any questions, um, to me about that. But I think it's, it gets kind of scientific and it's, I don't mean to, it's probably not a good thing to say. It gets a little complicated. And unless you deal with these types of things on a daily basis, it can become extremely confusing. But obviously, it's the health department's job to make sure that we comply with the code. And it's my job to make sure we do it as cost-effective as we can. But I'd mind, I would hope that, uh, I can get together with John Fanoza, to him and board this and to pursue it without any, which typically is, uh, takes a little more documentation, but they're generally pretty happy.
And you said there's, there's something on the way concerning the river treaty, Doc?
Basically, it's a, as I'm summarizing, the options that are available to you, as well as the analysis of the insulation and soil and all of the other stuff.
John, on the, on the zigzag piping.
Yes.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, it was my understanding when this was mentioned, that this was an alternate comparing the other tank down. If we put the zigzag piping in, if we take the tank offline, can we still run without boil water?
That would be the intent, though.
So that would be enough contact time in that piping, zigzag piping, to run the village or whatever without going to boil water?
Correct. And then, and the primary reason for that was to avoid the boil water in order, was that, well, I mean, it certainly would be conducive to the local industry.
Right.
If that could be avoided. And that's why I kind of took it upon myself to push that.
So this is gonna act like the second tank?
Essentially, it's replace it as far as chlorine contact.
So you were correcting that assumption?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's basically the, to, to remember as far back as nineteen ninety-nine, that's why this whole project developed, was to correct.
Correct according to contact. Because we were missing that by whatever, a few minutes, whatever, we didn't. But I just wanted to make sure that we were putting this pipe in, that it, if that tank went down, we were still gonna have that open, uh, without the boil water. So that was basically, when we take this tank, the old tank down, this zigzag is gonna replace that old tank.
And then, and basically, just to back up a little bit, we had talked of, uh, about thirty-two hundred feet, twenty-four hundred feet and all that stuff. Those are different operating scenarios. Where, where the five hundred and seventy feet comes from is, assuming that the village wouldn't, in the, in the middle of the winter, drain the tank down for normal maintenance. I mean, just practical assumptions. Whereas thirty-two hundred feet or whatever, twenty-four hundred, depending on which meeting minutes you're at, um, those were generated off the cuff and perhaps I guess to the, put the board off for another week. It's just totally confusing situation, I'm afraid. Uh, it certainly wasn't intentional.
Is it?
Uh, no, there is one other thing that I, as dark as the news is all the time, I would, uh, have one bright note to report. It's pretty small, but it is a bright note. In March of two thousand, we applied for a permit to bore under Lake Street. February of two thousand and three, next to this year, we submitted a whole other pile of documentation for the permit. On the Friday, the state of New York issued the permit, so that we could drill tomorrow. As small as the little angel is, we made it over that.
That's all, Mr. President. Thank you, trustee Huckrow, uh, trustee Penhill.
John, are you gonna talk about Maple Street tonight or no?
Yes.
Okay, so I can wait on that? Okay. What do I have? Two things. One of them is a special notice that the zoning board of appeals scheduled meeting of October thirteenth, which is a Monday, is canceled and will be held on Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and three, at four thirty PM. And at that time, they will be hearing, uh, they will have, be having a public hearing for two different applications. One of them is a special use or change of use permit required to open a restaurant at the former Amex Building located on the corner of Lake Street, Route nine B, and Route two. And the second public hearing will be held for an area variance for Shazie Hardware to construct a storage building on their property. And the public is welcome to attend. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Penhill. Uh, trustee Gevers is not here, but, um, we've updated on the sewer project, everything's out of standstill?
Nope. Uh, pretty much, but we are working on the punch list. Um, going up and down, uh, Maple Street, addressing pieces of sidewalk that have bicycle tracks. Pine Street, we're correcting that curbing that they, uh, um, put in incorrectly. Did some, uh, road pavement patching on Pearl Street, Pratt, uh, street intersection, um, Champlain Street intersection. We still have various lawns that, uh, need to be addressed with topsoil and seeding. And that's on hold until John spits out the Maple reconstruction. So that's what we're doing on it right now, which is limited.
No work being seen yet.
On the sewer project?
No.
Any questions with a little bit that I had about?
Thank you, Eric. That's it, unless the Maple Street is all yours, John?
Quick report on Maple Street. Basically, the project was advertised for bid. It's gonna be received on September twenty-third. Missed office at four o'clock PM, so anybody that's interested is more than welcome. Uh, we're going to have a pre-bid conference on Wednesday of this week, ten o'clock AM. To go along with that, basically, I am going to hopefully sit down with Brian on Wednesday. Review the final details with him, make sure he's comfortable with what is included in the contract. I believe through various eight million boxes over the last two weeks, I have his, what he would like to see in there. But I, I'm sitting down with him to make sure he's in full agreement. I did, our office did, uh, forward the advertisement to about, uh, twenty-five or thirty contractors over the weekend. So I believe it was in the paper maybe Saturday or Monday. In any event, uh, there's not a lot of this type of work out there, so it should be pretty good pricing for the village. Hopefully, uh, everybody will be satisfied when the project is done.
Any indication from Lockman to start the sidewalk?
I have not. I talked to Ted Locke a couple of times today, but I have not, I didn't discuss sidewalks or anything.
I'm just curious, that's all. Nothing? We know it's out there, it doesn't matter. That's it?
I have another question. So, I know Doug at the last meeting read an approximate timeline, and I know it's just approximate, and I understand that, but the bids are due back on the 23rd, so when would you anticipate work beginning, John?
I would think that they would be ready to, wanting to begin work the following week at the very least.
Because my, I guess my curiosity, just in talking to people around the village, I don't think the residents of Maple Street fully understand what else they have done this year before the mortgage finally paid. Could you just give a real brief description of, just really quick, what, what is gonna be happening?
Oh, sure. Basically, from the info we received, the public meetings and various discussions about drainage problems and all that stuff, there is this small section of storm sewer to be installed between Pine Street and Champlain Street on the west side.
Okay.
To address those problems. Basically, right now, most of that water winds its way into the sanitary system.
Okay.
Along with that, the, whatever concrete pavement is left over underneath, the asphalt, whatever's left after the water in the sewer and the electrical project, all that material will be removed. A new stone base course will be installed.
Okay.
And then new asphalt.
What, should only base coat this year?
That is my understanding that that was the desire of Brian to have it done that way, and certainly that seems to be.
When we have something happen, I'd hate like hell I have to go out to brand new roads.
And the concrete, John, running possibly, that's, that's not the length of the string that was set, right? The concrete that will, you need to be.
The concrete is, what remains of the concrete, basically, from all the excavations that have been done, is basically from Chapman Street south to Champlain. It's ripped up in a lot of places, and then left in a lot of other places, and that's primarily why you can't just overlay the whole street and maybe use the street.
And the reason I'm asking you the question is because just in talking to some of my neighbors and some of the people on the street, I think all that they are expecting is paving. And I just want to make sure they were prepared for more digging to occur before the paving.
There is a lot more digging to occur.
Right, okay.
However, it should be, it's of a little different nature than the digging in the past. Basically, in the past, residents have experienced trenches, whereas this is, would be an excavation of hardwood to the road, followed by hardwood pavement with hardwood crushed stone.
And how about traffic on the street during that time? What do you do about that?
There won't be a headache. Basically, about the only way to accomplish the work in a reasonably efficient manner is to close the street during working hours, block by block, so to speak. Similar to what has occurred, basically, during all the other constructions. Obviously, emergency vehicles are in want to.
Right.
All that stuff wouldn't be given priority. However, it would be advantageous, I think, both for the residents and for the contractor that, during the working hours, there'll have to be certain sections, very limited in length, closed off, and men allowed to work in a safe manner. It's just very difficult and expensive to maintain traffic in such a narrow.
Yeah, absolutely. Would it be worth posting for local traffic only, or? I know we've got the road signs up, but from one end to the other, basically.
Oh.
And that basically will happen.
Okay, good.
I mean, to some extent, if you want, if they're working way down in the south end, there wouldn't be a lot of need to disrupt traffic on the north end.
Right, right.
Existing traffic. I mean, the basic theory, I guess, in the maintenance and protection of traffic, virtually any project, is you try to accommodate the users of the highway to an extent practical.
Would you recommend, okay, would you recommend letting the school know, or for busing purposes?
That's, that's included in the, has been included in past pipe projects, and it will be included in this one.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
As a matter of fact, I would kind of hope that we can review the bus route with the school, like, you know, at third school, and maybe we can, maybe a little back and forth to go with new things.
About how long, John, do you think, in rough estimate, for the little project?
I would think that this fall, we've got about six or eight weeks at most that you're gonna be able to work there. And then in the spring, I think we need to, one of the things I wanted to talk over with Brian, and I know how long it would take, and I want to make sure that we have a reasonable schedule out of the contractors so it doesn't drag up till August, trying to get grass to grow and that sort of thing.
Are we gonna see pavement this year? Pavement this year?
That's the intent, for sure. Good pavement. Terrible pavement.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Carol, you got anything? I'll come. Phil does.
That's required.
Brian?
The only thing I have is, we were trying to work with Wyatt for a scheduled outage, and we wanted to do it the first or second week of October, and it's pushed back to the third or fourth week, and still wait for Wyatt people to go back to me, so we can have an outage on the Saturday morning. It would be probably from 6 to 11, so we can tie over the south end of the village onto the new line until we're ready.
Have you any more to add, John? Eric?
Doug wanted to apologize, he had a family bit of a crisis, or else he would've been up here this evening reviewing most of the stuff I reviewed. One thing he did ask me to pass on is the board, at the request of the mayor, the village engineer is reviewing Fred Wright's, Fred Wright, I guess, is a particular problem, but that whole area in behind those houses, the drainage, how to handle that, how to get it out of there, Two Smith Street. Village engineer's reviewing the parking pattern at the Civic Center, and provided a planning board regulation feedback for Mike to review at Kelly's request. And what else did he say? Substation. He's doing some more calculations on that due to the fact.
I need the blueprints for an underground, like yesterday.
Blueprints underground for?
To put, not underground, I'm sorry, put foundations for the substation.
He's working on that presently right now.
We need to get started now. We need to get going up there.
A lot of loads.
I talked to Kurt, and Kurt says Doug's gotta move on it.
And he is moving on it right now, and one thing he asked me to relay was that the final things he's working on is loads and calculations that he didn't have prior to a couple of weeks ago. And he's working on the final foundations, he told me exactly what it was, but I didn't write it in my chicken scratch, but he is presently working on that, and he's talking with Kurt.
Soon as he can get into Brian, then we can get started up there.
Right.
We want to start this week. He's got, he's got quite a bit of work up there to do on the foundations, and we want to get in for cold weather.
I know that's on the top of Doug's list, that's all I can say.
That is top priority.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes, I have just one thing. Earlier this summer, we had a little go-around with portable swimming pools.
No.
Phil asked the village attorney, Mr. Bernane, for an interpretation of the code law, which I sent him, and he sent back this letter, which I'd like to read, it's very short, says, "Letter confirms our telephone conversation of Wednesday, August 20th, 2003, during which we discussed the above referenced issue. Enclosed herewith for your review and comment, please find a copy of Appendix G in the New York State Building Code, which addresses swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs. In reviewing this appendix, it is my opinion that Mr. Tatro is acting in accordance with the New York State Building Code requiring building permits, electrical inspections, and barriers with respect to swimming pools, which come under the definition of swimming pools in the code." To that end, what I would like to say, all these pools are down now, these temporary pools, it's not an issue anymore, and it won't be an issue till next year. What I would propose is that we send each person a letter that has one of these pools with a copy of this letter, saying that they do need permits for them, they do need to be inspected, and they have to comply with the code. And if we can't get compliance, then we just go the legal route, I guess. I need the board's input on this, as to what they want me to do.
It's the law, is what.
It, it's the law. I mean, my job is to send these letters, to make sure these people are notified of what the code is. After that, I mean, it's up to the board if you want to carry this farther, if you want to drop it, or what you want to do with it.
Well, I don't think we have to act tonight, I think, to the board, to take this under consideration, and we've got a couple of months to discuss this.
Well, nobody's gonna be swimming in a couple of months.
No, that's right. If they are, I don't know, I won't go there.
It's warm, like, this is all.
George, can I ask you one question, or two questions about that?
Sure.
George? Would, would a permit be required every year?
No.
A one-shot permit? A one-time permit for the portable pool?
The permit itself is a village, it's a decision the board makes to, it's a way of paying for the services. The only thing that's required is the electrical inspections, and they meet the code.
And that would be a one-shot?
Right.
One, one inspection, then you're set.
I think the sad thing here, this is that, this was overlooked for several years. And it's known, and I'm not putting blame on anybody or anything, but I can understand the frustrations of the people to have those pools out there now, that have had it for five years, and all of a sudden, then we can hit with this. And I think everybody can understand that, but I think there's something that we need as a board, have to sit down and look at. And I'll settle that subject, and thank you, like, anything else?
That's it.
I did have one other thing, George, to slip through the cracks. I would like to take this opportunity and thank Carol for her assistance over the last couple of weeks, or actually, or weeks. She's helped me out tremendously, filling me in, pointing me in the right direction. Sometimes it gets pretty hectic, it's nice.
I've got a crazy question, John.
It's nice to not have to ask five people just to go to one person.
Well, can we collect something for her gun?
Sure.
I want to say crazy. And at this time, I would like to thank Mary Rascal for all the work she's done on getting this thing in for the National Storage Site. She did all the paperwork and all the research, and she's been committed for it. Okay, but that, I, believe it or not, in five after eight, we'd like a motion for adjournment.
Second?
Motion made, second, in discussion, no discussion, no favor.
Aye.
No opposed, no carry. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.